You're good? Okay, thank you. North Smithfield Town Council meeting, May 6, 2024. Madam Clerk, can you start us with the prayer and the pledge?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bieregad.
Here.
Ms. Hamilton.
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Here.
Mr. Ogier.
Here.
Ms. Alves.
Here. Next item, executive session closed. Discussion by council vote or other action pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42-46-582, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation or potential litigation. One, Rivedo versus North Smithfield. It is 1-22-CV-00367-JJM-PAS. Anyone make a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to move it, go into executive session.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bieregad.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, we're good.
I'll make a motion to reconvene back into open session. Let the record reflect, one vote was taken in the sealed minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. Sohara?
Yes.
Ms. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes. Next item, open forum. Non-agenda items only pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six dash sixty. Maximum three minutes per person. All right, so the first person is Ted. And just a reminder, three minutes, because we do have quite a few people.
Unfortunately, it's going to take probably longer. My name is Ted Maschuduski. I live at 114 Salesville Road. And I'm here to inform the council about the problem. We have a rainwater runoff on Salesville Road between 118 Salesville and 114. For the video, send me to it. I have videos to show you what the problem is. In what versus rainstorm one. Bump one, bump one.
Is the mic on? Can you just tap the mic and make sure it's on? Thank you.
That would make a difference. Okay, this is going up from 118 up to St. Jude. You can see where the water's running over Dennis Chamberlain's house at 118. It's going over my neighbor's house at 116. And what I did do, I took videos of we saw where the arrow markers were for the drainage, and none of them were working. You can see that's one of the markers right there. I've lived at 114 for thirty-eight years, and it's only been this past year where we've had problems with this kind of runoff.
You could take a canoe down that street.
Absolutely. So if that's enough, if you want to go to part two. Okay. Now this should be coming back down from 118 to 114.
That's a reminder.
Yeah, so if we can just, yeah. Are there any other photos?
Yep, if you want to go to part three. I tried getting briefs of all different angles. So this is walking down from 116 to my house, 114. Basically, the rain collection on the roadway itself works fine, but anything that's coming from that corner is what's going over the lawn of my neighbors and into my house. You can see to the right, it's just a river going across. And we have a Wind Socket Falls showing over there. And what's happening, that water is now going over to where I have my pool.
When was this?
This was probably the last heavy storm that we had. And the same thing happened back in December.
So this was just recently?
Yeah, there's any heavy rainstorm now, this is what's happening?
Eighty-three was there for seventy years. Never had a drop of water, had a foot and a half. Had the cell pump, I had the side of the bomb a couple of times.
And what changed?
Solar. Can't prove it, but that seems to be it.
Tree around?
Four? I've been to the hyperdepartment. They did give some sandbags, but it doesn't do that much good. As you can see, I have a deck that's going over the deck and the backside of my pool. All the backfill I have for that pool was all wiped out and pushed to the back of my yard. I'm surprised the apple tree didn't fall on my pool. So you can see all the rocks, you can see the water come down to the side of my pool, all the water running down, taking all the rocks out. Oh, twice, my wife and I shoveled the rocks back under the pool, and with the rainstorm just pushes it back. So we kind of gave up. So this is, there's JPEGs right at the beginning, four pictures, you show that. Okay, so this is my backyard, all the rocks. Next one, please.
That's from your pool?
That's my shed I just had put up last year. All the rocks are pushed into the shed. Next one, please. So that's the back of my shed. All the rocks from my pool are now there. And I think there's one more. And that's the waterfall we saw. I had bricks put up, just knocked all the bricks down and went into the yard. So I'm not sure what really can be done. It does seem to be, that corner is the problem. If we could somehow fix the corner some way, this would stop. I can't fertilize my yard, I can't put lumen there, because it's all going to wipe out.
So 114 to 118?
118, yes. It starts at really 118 up to St. Jude, that corner.
Mr. Zalinski, could you have someone go out there?
Couple of years ago, we mentioned it to them, about banking the roadway more to the other side of the road to keep the water away from our side. If they did that, the water would flow down nicely. It wouldn't affect anybody else's house, but the way it is now, it's affecting three yards.
Mr. Zalinski, could you have someone go out there and try and look at it and see if there's something that can be done?
Sir, Council President, this involves roads, drainage, that are found at DPW. We'd like to have planning take a look at, I think Mr. Maschuduski's saying that there's a possibility this may be attributed to the solar farm. We'd have to look at elevations, that's the planning department. And would certainly see if the building and zoning, I don't think there's a zoning violation there, but definitely DPW and planning take a look at it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claire? No, but we can just do the three minutes, Tammy?
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. I've had a lot of people call my home because they're going through town and they see these ten-feet trees, the trunks, you know, usually it's down at the bottom, and they look like totem poles all over the place. And I've never seen trees cut like that before. So when I inquired, I don't know who advised them to do it this way, but if they don't have to go down to the trunks, you can cut more trees. But then you have these huge totem poles just standing straight up all over the place. Was this recommended by Zubba? I couldn't get through Mr. Zubba, but if you go down Wind Socket Hill, you see it. You, they've worked at other small roads, and they've left these ten-foot, it's the basic structure of the tree. There's now, of course, all the limbs are off, but I've never seen that done in North Smithfield before when cutting a tree. So if, I thought maybe they did it for erosion, but I was quickly corrected on that one. But if I would have a more reasonable answer to these people are saying, what's all these, these totem poles all over town? If it's something new that DEM recommends, at least I can put that forward. So I'd like, Mr. Pentagast, if you can give me something reasonable to answer them, I'd appreciate it, but from what I get right now, maybe it's a new way of harvesting. I don't know. But to say you can cut more trees if you just don't cut them is sure.
I'm not going to wrap this onto it tonight. I'll get contact in my office, I would enable you to answer.
Well, I went up there several times, I didn't see anybody, like you weren't there. I drove up, but no one was there when I went. But at least we can tell them it's for this or that. That's it.
Next is Brian Van Howe.
Two items I had, I didn't realize it, are on the agenda, so I, small speech, I guess.
Okay. Mike Clifford?
Mike Clifford, 489 Black Plain Road. I just, I handed these out to people, to the members of the council before the meeting began, and I just want to bring this to your attention and ask if you could provide the additional information. This is from the FY 2023 budget, and this was the legal advertisement, and the top half has broken down the tax revenue coming in by category. The new tax levy that would levy advertisement that's in the paper this week doesn't have that section. It only has the bottom part, and it doesn't have the assessed values for tangible, residential, commercial, and all that laid out this way. I would appreciate if, you know, if it's not required by law, fine, but could we at least provide this information on the town website to supplement what the legal advertisement is? You were cited by the auditors in one of your audit reports recently, I forget which year it was, but you exceeded the levy range that you put in your legal advertisement. So, you know, if this information had been provided, somebody could have probably done a pretty quick calculation and said, wait a minute, this isn't right. But we're supposed to guess, I guess, the local property tax levy is one sum of thirty-five million nine hundred and fifty thousand, but what I'm asking is, could we, you know, could we break that down by commercial property, tangible property, residential? And can you put it, put it on the website, please, of the town? So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I know you have it on the agenda for a tax stabilization agreement tonight again. You put one on a while ago. Is this, I'm assuming this is being promoted by Mr. Zalinski, because your name is on there?
Mike, you can't talk about agenda items on this one.
Oh, okay, okay, I'll wait until afterwards then. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was hopefully putting a, I know there's not much time left before the end of the general assembly session, but I really wish, earlier in the year, some of you had mentioned that there might need to be some language added to the charter to address a problem that arises when a public, appointed public official does something that they shouldn't do, and you don't have the right by law or by charter to take any action against them. And that really is, it's an embarrassment, because you're stuck with that situation, and you can have somebody accused of the most atrocious thing or found guilty of it, and there's nothing in the charter that gives you the right to, to take any action. So I know Wind Socket has something in their charter, but probably you've used it, but it's in their charter anyway, but if you could at least ask the solicitor to take a look at it and see if there's anything you could put quickly into this current charter to get the question on the ballot for November to prevent any happenings in the future that leave us kind of handicapped and susceptible. Thank you.
Thank you. Town Council is sitting as Board of Licensed Commissioners. A discussion by council vote of other action on picturing license. DBA's Soul Shine Nutrition located at 585 Smithfield Road. Owner is Marie Hayes. If you can just state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Marie Hayes. The business address is 585 Smithfield Road in North Smithfield for Soul Shine Nutrition.
So you want to just give a brief summary of what you're doing there?
Absolutely. So we are here in the town of North Smithfield. We currently own a nutrition club in Wind Socket, Rhode Island, been there for four and a half years. Now we want to spread some more health and wellness into the town of North Smithfield. So it's a nutrition club where you can come in and you can get an energizing tea, a healthy marrow replacement shake, some protein coffees. Also, we do wellness evaluations. Basically, just spreading health and wellness into the community. There's not a lot of healthy spots around, there's a lot of fast food, and this is something really, really good for your health, where, you know, you don't see a lot of that, and I'm just excited to be here and to spread more love and light into the community.
Madam Clerk, everything is in order.
We are waiting for the certificate of occupancy from building inspection, but I'm asking if you could approve it based on what we have for now, and once that gets pushed through, we'll give her the license.
Do we have a date for that, or?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Soul Shine Nutrition at 585 Smithfield Road pending the CO. Everything else is in order, so that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. Sohara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is discussion by council vote of other action on payment of bills. Does anybody have any questions?
We're going to take that off there? The yellow part, highlighted?
Tony, can you just remove this wording on your cover sheet, the forty-eight hours?
Sure.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Page one of the check register. Fourth paragraph, rubbish, payment made in error, and recycling. So the rubbish, rubbers, rubbish for April, and the recycling for April are exactly, well, a penny different. Is that, is that right, or that they'd be the same amount of money?
You're talking about MTG disposal?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm just making sure. So you're looking at the?
Yeah, just the amounts were almost identical, so I didn't know if that was, is that normally that we pay half, half and half, or pretty much?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah?
Yep. But the payment made in error. Yeah, Marie had caught something, so they made, we contacted them and?
The adjustment?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, page four. Overtime and finance, we're over by 1,096, not a lot, but, you know, just looking into the?
Yeah, as we said, we had talked last time, that's not something, we don't have any more holidays for the rest of the year, so that's not something that's going to continue going over. We can make a budget?
You have Memorial Day coming up.
That doesn't affect, that shouldn't affect, no. Yes, okay, that's what it was, it wasn't a pay a week. But we can do a budget transfer to cover it, it's up to town. It's up to town. I'm trying, it's, we'll get to that later on in the, in the agenda, but I'm trying to cover those things.
Okay, and then the only other one I had was page six, which is under dispatch, overtime again, over by 8,000.
Yeah, that's, that would be a question for the police chief, but do, he had explained it to me, it's, it's a lot of people who are out. I think someone's on medical leave, someone's, there's a bunch of people on leave, I don't know exactly who, but I would think that would be, you would want to shoot him an email to question that. He can, he explained it to me, but I don't remember everybody.
Okay. So is there a savings in salaries to offset that?
We've looked at transferring funds, but I think we're, I don't think there's anywhere to transfer those funds. I mean, we, now that they, yes, we're going to look into that, but we don't know what the amount is yet, but it's, I doubt it.
Yeah, because that, that whole department, the health insurance, the defined benefit, everything is, is all over.
Right. Yeah, he didn't expect a lot of people to be out, and he had to transfer people from department to department to be able to cover, and it's?
Okay, well, I can reach out to him to get a definitive on that, because, I mean, it's adding up, you know? Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? No? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the payment of bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of bills in the amount of $167,336.54.
Second. That's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. DeBiragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Our next one is discussion by council vote of other action on status slash progress report of specific items. The first one is facilities manager.
There'll be more to come over the coming weeks, especially as we get into the budget based on last discussion.
Okay. The next one is grants.
You're looking at me? So council has hired a professional grant writer to address all these. If I remember correctly, you were asking for an update on grants once a month or every other meeting. Is that correct? You got an update last meeting, so I didn't see the need for it, but I can give you an update.
Okay.
Things are moving along. We've applied for a grant for additional funding for the police station, which I mentioned last time. We had to make some adjustments to it. As of 4:04 this afternoon, I received an email from congressional staff member looking for a letter of support from town council, which I mentioned to everybody individually. Hopefully tomorrow, there's a drop dead date by tomorrow afternoon. Received it today at 4:04. I have a letter of recommendation in. I'm asking the town council, whomever is available, I'd like to know ahead of time so I can put it on the letter of recommendation where I will drive to your homes and you can sign it. Is that amenable, councilors? Do you think you'll all be available tomorrow?
Do you need all of us?
No, I think the council president, vice president would suffice, but I'm just letting you know that this is what we're seeking.
I mean, I'll have to let you know what my hours will be tomorrow, but it'll be really early.
It's okay with the council president, or vice president, or somebody that represents the council. We talked about it in public, so it's on record. So are you amenable for a letter to go to Congressman Amo?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, that's the 500,000 you said for?
Yeah. Unfortunately, some of the things that we applied for are not eligible, but, yeah, I don't want to get into too much dissertation here, because there'll be bombarded with people not understanding the grant process. I'm certainly being transparent about it by talking about it in public, but looking for a letter of support.
And there's no opportunity to sign tonight since we're all here?
Well, I didn't craft a letter tonight until I wanted to have this conversation with you, with the council. Can definitely have it by 10:00 AM tomorrow morning.
You got it.
Okay.
May I ask a question? Was this a grant that was sought after by yourself?
Yes, through my, through the administration, yes.
So it wasn't the grant writer?
Somehow the grant writer got involved in it, but it was already being applied for with the chief and planning and myself.
Okay.
So, yeah, they are involved.
Okay.
Lot of, lot of, lot of, lot of people trying to raise money for this town, and I think they need to be acknowledged for that.
I just want to make sure he's earning his keep.
The next one is human resource position. That's going to be on the next item on the agenda after this section. Municipal Building Review Task Force. Paul, do you want to talk about that update?
Well, the only update we have is that we probably would ask the clerk if she could pull the council at some point and have another meeting scheduled for the latter part of May, so that we can have another meeting.
What, do we talk about after Memorial Day?
Yeah, after Memorial Day, if possible. But then we should have more information to discuss. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, discussion by council vote of other action on ordinance amending Chapter Five, Article 10 of North Smithfield Code of Ordinances by adding Section 5-78.,1, establishing the position of human resource manager. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. DeBiragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Anyone like to get up and talk about the, and if we can kind of keep this down to three minutes also, please?
Suzanne Burnia, 7 Lepre Road. I'm here to represent the Personnel Board as Secretary. The North Smithfield Personnel Board values the role of human resources in town administration. The town has the good fortune of employing a certified human resource professional whose knowledge and commitment are equally strong. Her performance respected, and she has verbalized enjoying her position. The Personnel Board has not been alerted to missing functions. A budgetary placeholder was added to the town budget for a part-time human resource manager in June 2023, which is 11 months ago. Despite the Personnel Board's efforts to learn more about the position, the town council has had no updates, meeting to meeting. Now the job description is available for review, raising additional questions about the initial why and intent. Is the human resource manager a full-time or a part-time position? Is manager the correct job title? Has the town's personnel roster expanded? Are they missing functions? Does the coordinator, finance director, or town administrator need additional support? The role of directors, manager, and coordinators all involve overseeing and coordinating activities within an organization. Depending on the size of a company or organization, these roles are interchangeable and often overlap. Shared responsibilities include communicating both verbally, vertically, and horizontally with team members within the organization. Assuring tasks are appropriately delegated and accomplished accurately and efficiently. The development of work and project schedules, and the organization of process and resources for effective, effective collaboration. Roles begin to diverse based on complexity, on complexity of the organization's structure, number of employees, and reporting lines. In a large organization, a coordinator typically oversees a smaller part of a department or project. If the organization required both positions, the coordinator would likely to report to the manager. Their role is direct and logical. The coordinator becomes the link between management and staff, communicating decisions, and providing instruction, as well as supporting the manager with decision-making. The pivotal role of the coordinator allows the development and mentoring, as well as completing performance reviews. The manager's role is operational. They will, they will also contribute to strategic planning and goal-setting in organizations without a department director. It is the director who holds the strategic role and has the broadcast authority, the broadest authority and accountability. A side-by-side review, side-by-side review of the proposed Town of North Smithfield Human Resource Manager position and the benefit and payroll coordinator highlights the overlapping of a manager and coordinating coordinator position. Most of the responsibilities listed for the Human Resource Manager are contained within the benefit and payroll coordinator job description. Exceptions are number four. As needed, serving as an interview panelist, conducting screening interviews, completing or assisting department heads in completing reference checks or coordinating on candidates, or creating or suggesting?
Excuse me, Ms. Burnia?
Interview questions.
Ms. Burnia?
And number seven, research, researching and offering various skills, training, opportunities, and programs.
Are you, is, is there, are you almost done, because you're well over three minutes? Can you finish up? Can you do it quickly?
This brings us full circle. Human resource management is a vital professional role in local government. A single hiring position can impact the entire community. Challenges across all HR functions are expanding the workforce strengths. Maybe we need something else. Maybe we need, should we be considering the role of human resource in navigating AI, mitigating natural disasters, disasters, or safely managing the next unprecedented, unprecedented event? If the Town of North Smithfield is ready to invest in additional human resource management, let's invest time now in thinking through the complexity of future local government human resource challenges.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Brian Van Howe, Windsocket Hill Road. Sometime last year, many months ago, I had brought to the town council a potential solution to the human resources. It was never followed up. I mean, I provided information, contacts, and nothing ever came of that. I don't know why. I think it might have been a very cost-effective solution to the situation, and I'm just curious as to why that didn't go anywhere. It's still available and a possibility, at least as far as I'm concerned. I don't know where things stand.
And now that we have the job description and we have the outline, now we can move forward with certain candidate.
With searching out?
Right.
Okay.
But now that we have the groundwork to go forward, that's what we were working on.
Yeah. Well, this is one of the services that that organization would have, could have provided to, could have made life easier for everyone. Not taking away from all the effort that has been done, but there is a potential solution out there.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I do have his, his contact information. Thank you. Anyone else?
I haven't seen the whole document and the job description that you've come up with, but I would encourage you to do something in the area of a human resources director. You know, there are things in this town that just go unchallenged, and nobody ever disputes anything. You, Mrs. Hamilton was noting the overtime for dispatches, the overtime for police, the overtime. I think it's got to be based on somebody overseeing this and making sure that we're following the rules, and the rules are too dealing with overtime, for instance. So, you know, I think that is, is very necessary. I don't think that this person should be a member of the bargaining unit. I think, and I don't think this person should be appointed by the town administrator. I think it's got to be, you know, this should be somebody who's appointed by the council, and it should not be a human, a member of the bargaining unit. How can they be impartial with their own members if they came forward to them? So I think these are all things that I'd like you to consider when you do finally tip, you know, refine the job description and go with something. The, you know, the, the money that we've been spending lately in settlements, I don't understand why everybody isn't screaming for some type of monitoring to go in place here. We spent, I think you just said it last year, was it $400,000 in total for the police harassment issue on the dispatches, against the dispatches? One individual got $300,000, the other got $100,000. Now we have a settlement, we have a settlement, I'm sure we're going to be budgeting for now for the issue with the town administrator and the secretary. So rather than spend all this money on settlements, why don't we try to put something in place where if somebody has an issue, they can bring it to somebody impartial who will act on it and take the steps that are required by law to do? Because what, with the police settlement, we paid that because we didn't follow the legal steps that we should have to prevent it and stopped it. We just let it go on. So I think it's badly needed, and it'll hopefully in the long run save some money in settlements. Before the police, there was another one for $300,000 with the highway department. That was several years ago, but I mean, it's not something new to this town. It happens a lot. So I would encourage you to try to come up with something that has some responsibility aside from being, you know, you can't have, you've got to keep this person or this agency independent and not influenced by who's their boss or who's a fellow union member. Thank you.
Anyone else like to get up and speak?
That's the, that's, for those of you sitting here, that's the actual ordinance amending the chapter there, so.
Is it a?
It's a, it's a chat. Do you have the next one?
Do you have the second page? So that does say that it is not a, a union position.
Anyone else like to speak on this topic during the public hearing? One more time, anyone like to speak?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. DeBiragod?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. And then would someone like to make a motion to accept the second reading?
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter Five, Article 10 of the North Smithfield Code of Ordinances by adding Section 5-78.,1, establishing the position of human resource manager.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the ordinance, or any changes anyone like to make?
I would have some discussion, please.
Okay.
I understand the need for a human resource officer. I don't think a part-time position is the way to go. As I stated last week, or the week before, I think that what we should be looking into is hiring a consultant or a firm, however you want to put it. That way there, there's somebody available 24 hours a day, part-time, we're creating a part-time position that God knows when something happens, it's going to happen when they're not, when they're not there, or when they're off or they're unavailable. And that's just, you know, what can go wrong will go wrong, and that's exactly what's going to happen. And then what will happen then is to revert back and contact the person that we were contacting now anyway. Where if we have a firm in here, that firm will be independent, and they will not be getting buddy-buddy in the upstairs with anybody, and they'll be very professional, and that somebody can go to them if needed 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
No, I can't agree to that.
But also with this person, this person being a manager, they can be called at any time, too.
Well, that's a good point. I mean, who's going to, who's going to go want to be on 24-hour call for, for that kind of money?
I mean, it's a part-time position. We just, we budgeted that money not knowing if it was going to be full-time or part-time. I don't think we actually considered or came up with the actual dollar amount that that person's made, because we didn't know what, we were just trying to get the position created. So, but as a manager, that person knows if they're, if they're a human resource manager and there's an issue, they're going to be called, you know, just like any other manager in town. If, you know, someone else, something was going wrong in their department, they're going to be called.
But how many are part-time?
I'm sorry?
Isn't this a half-time position?
Part-time, yeah, it's a manager, yeah.
So do you think there'll be that type of commitment, or, let's face it, ah, doesn't make sense? make sense.
I mean, we're not going to obviously be calling them every day that they're off.
You never know.
Right.
This is North Smithfield?
Well, I mean, that's, that's what you feel, but I mean, if we have that many issues, then we should definitely talk about full-time, but we're talking about part-time right now just to get this going in the, in the department.
So may I just read some of the responsibilities? So oversight of personnel records, including personnel files and records concerning employee complaints or grievances, leave of absence, benefits continuation, et cetera. Serving as an interface for employees on issues such as complaints of harassment or discrimination or policy questions. Resolving compliance issues regarding applicable human resource and employment laws and regulations. Overseeing the employment process, including, serving as needed as an employment interview panelist, conducting screening interviews, completing reference checks on candidates or creating or suggesting interview questions. Effectively recommending leave of absence or disability accommodations and compliance with applicable policies in federal, state, and local laws. Developing and deploying employee relation programs such as health or benefit fairs, recognition programs, employee events, as budgeted and approved. And then it goes on, other duties as assigned, okay. So I think what we're looking at is more than just like somebody who's going to be waiting for somebody to call them if there's a problem in town.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's a pretty comprehensive list of responsibilities that have to do with federal, state, and local laws and ordinances. So it has to be somebody that's very familiar if they're going to be giving advice and being our eyes and ears. So I think it's more than just.
And there'll also be an extension of the finance department, which was just mentioned at the last meeting, that finance is, is very shorthanded and over, you know, you have way too much going on. So if this person needs to help out in some sort of audit or some sort of, you know, even if we do get on track and doing monthly audits with, with health insurance and payments and, you know, there's, there's so many things that this person can do because they are an extension of finance. So, and I agree with, with Paulette, when, the person's not just going to sit there and wait for the next person to come in and, and have an employee complaint. It's going to be hopefully to the point that we're also doing employee, like, you know, with Blue Cross or whatever, they might have some sort of function going on. And this is promoting, you know, good health and promoting different things within the department or within the, the town. So it's not just sitting there waiting for a complaint. It's, it's there to assist the town and to help the employees and, you know, and just have a, you know, great morale and, and a good workplace and good environment. That's, that's all this person, and then, you know, obviously with the, with the, was it three years at least of supervisory, at least they can help in different areas, you know, that's.
But I don't disagree with you. It's just that I think where we differ is on the execution of it. And what's, what's the price, what's the fee, the salary again?
I think we had fifty-something, fifty what?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand. You're going to have someone for $35,000 do all this? I'd have to question what kind of person that's going to.
This is stuff that the person could do. Like I said, we're starting at part-time because everyone was like, we don't need this position, we don't need it. So now if we start part-time and then once they get into the position, they may find that, you know what, this person does need to be full-time, but we don't know until we start. We have to start somewhere. So we start one year at 35 and then, you know, it, it will probably grow. I'm sure it's going to grow because it's a position that's needed in basically any, any.
Then you're going to have to rewrite this because doing everything but cleaning the kitchen sink. So you wrote something for job specifically and now, well, he can be used or she can be used anywhere.
It's in the job description. It's an extension of finance. It says other duties as assigned or directed by the administrator or finance director. Because this person would fall under the, under the finance director.
I actually think they should be pulled out. They should be standalone.
Have their own.
Tony, we've all said Tony wears too many hats, so the finance director wears too many hats. And I think HR should be its own department, just like it is.
So then you have to change it to a director, right? Is that what you're saying?
You could leave it as a manager. I mean, we can debate that, what the title is, but I just, I think if we really want it to be separate, it needs to stand alone, you know, and it's, it reports to the finance director and/or generally the town administrator or who directly is the direct line of report. I know it is the finance director, but if he's not available, then, you know, what does that relationship and situation look like? And I wonder if we even need to put part-time, full-time in the ordinance? If we can just say, there is hereby created the position of a Human Resource Manager. Does it need to carve it out? Because if we do decide to increase it, right, to a full-time position at any point or consult it out, you know, or contract it out, we'd have to re-change this anyways to two readings and et cetera, so.
Well, I think we put part-time because there was pushback on whether or not we needed a full-time position.
No, I get, I get why. I was just curious if we needed to.
Yeah, I mean, we probably should take it out because then it doesn't hold us to that criteria.
I, I'm going to have, I, I just don't know the kind of person you're going to get for, for $35,000 a year. Now you've been taking that, you're telling them it's not even a part-time job anymore. Now it's just, and not for $35,000 a year?
But that's all that was in this budget. We're going into another, we're going into a new budget cycle.
But for 35, you might be able to hire, go into a firm, but that's obviously.
Or maybe we partner with another community.
I'm sorry?
Or maybe we partner with another community. I know some communities in the state have done that. I think North Providence does it on a few communities. So, you know, 35 may, you know, you put 35 and another town puts in another, it's two towns. Maybe there isn't a lot of volume, you know, to justify the 35, but maybe between the two there is. So I think how this flushes out can still be decided, but I think the first step is getting it, the language approved.
May I ask how the administrator, who's going to have to deal with this, give his opinion on this?
Well, thank you, Councilman Buragad. First time we've been brought into this conversation. I appreciate it. What we have in front of us is a problem. A situation that's wrought with problems. So just heard people say, well, what's the, what's the amount on the budget? 50-plus K when it's actually 35. Is it going to be part-time or is it going to be full-time? We don't want people on the second floor getting buddy-buddy with others. Where's this person going to be stationed? Where are they going to sit? Because they certainly can't co-mingle with non-union and, uh, union employees, just can't happen. So I, I think you've got a lot of things to research here. I'm not in favor of it because we already have a Benefits and Payroll Coordinator. If you read this job description, it's already being done and then some. It's being done on Saturdays and Sundays. Somebody gets injured, somebody has a baby, the Benefits and Payroll Coordinator is always I think there's a problem with this. It's just wrought now. I would certainly like to sit down with council members and have my opinions taken into consideration because the town administrator, this person, whomever it may or may not be, will have to report to the town administrator and the finance director. But not once was I asked a way in on this, not once. So you're going to reap what you sow. This is going to be problematic. Be careful.
I think it's going to be problematic if we're going into it like that.
Going into what?
You're already saying it's going to be an issue. You should, you would, I would think you would welcome this.
You don't see, you don't see the issues with this?
No, I don't.
You don't recognize what's already being performed up there?
And we've already had this looked at and some of these, some of these things should not be done by a union employee.
Well, you can also look, you can also look at the job description of the, of the Benefits and Payroll Coordinator, which you supported, Councilman Alves. You supported that. And now you're looking to change it, take this person out of this position. I think it's a travesty.
I'm not taking anyone out of a position.
You are.
No, I'm not. There is no position being taken away and I, and I really don't think you should be putting that out there because no position is being taken away at all. And here you are saying that this person is doing the job on Saturdays and Sundays, that's why we're having overtime.
Oh, no.
And the person, the person should not be called on Saturday and Sunday.
Nope.
That's what you just said.
Nope.
So when we call someone, we should be paying them for three or four hours.
Let's, let's clear up that overtime misconception right now.
Well, you just said Saturday or Sunday.
Overtime is when there's a Monday holiday and payroll has to get in, or people would not get paid for that week.
So how is someone working Saturdays and Sundays?
Because they get a call on their phone from somebody that's been injured on the job, whether via police officer, somebody's kid's been rushed to the hospital, and the Benefits and Payroll Coordinator loyally picks up that phone call, does not care if it's a Saturday or Sunday. Let's clear up another misconception.
So now someone's working off the clock.
Let me finish, please.
No, someone's working off the clock.
There's no comp time. She does that to take care of the employees of the Town of North Smithfield.
Okay.
No one's saying that that isn't good?
No, but we shouldn't be having people know they can work off the clock either.
Right. I think, I think what we're doing here is providing an additional resource to the town. There isn't going to be a loss of anyone. There isn't, we've worked with the union. We've looked at the, the roles and responsibilities. There is a duplication right now, and I think one of the things that is really important that we seem to be missing is that some of the responsibilities that are currently being done historically are not being done by a person in the union. Right? So we have, there's a disconnect right there. So what we're trying to do is help you and your departments try to make a more smooth and well-defined new position. It's not taking away from anyone, really.
So it's not personal. When you say we're trying to help you, you mean the town administrator's position? Is that what you mean?
You as an administrator of the town.
How about use the term town administrator? Don't reply to anybody in a personal sense. That's a mistake in HR right there. Now another, and another point I want to make out, you have a member of the Personnel Board was trying to give you the, the thoughts of the Personnel Board and got gavelled. I don't know how many nights I sit here and people go on and get up there and standing up there for six, seven minutes and don't get gavelled. And you got a, you got a member of a board trying to read what the board has thought and tried to give you, wasn't fully delivered. You frustrated the woman. You owe her an apology. You owe her an apology for gaveling her.
All right.
Mr. Clifford, you are like the buzzing of flies. Be quiet unless you're acknowledged by the council president.
Okay, so where are we here?
Discussion.
Discussion. Still discussion?
Uh huh.
Well, I don't want to see it, also another, this, you know, one of the things, one of the things that you're mentioning is, well, maybe this eventually will become a full-time position. The last thing I want to do is, is put another person on the payroll with benefits and all that stuff. So I'm going to stick to my position with the, that we should be going with a consultant or firm, and which is the only reason why I can't support this. But like I said, in principle, I agree, but this is the execution of this idea, I'm going to have to disagree.
So can I just ask you a question? I mean, just, so if, if one of the, one of the things on here is employee relations, so how would, how would someone feel comfortable calling someone that they don't know who they're calling? If someone has, has to talk to someone about something that they're experiencing or that they feel or that they, whatever, how does, how does someone who works in the environment feel comfortable picking up a phone and not knowing who they're speaking to?
That's a fair question. But these positions exist, right? So these, these firms exist, these consultants exist, so they're obviously doing this, this job, they're performing this function in other locations, at other corporations or towns or whatever. So it's done.
Right. But it's also done on a larger scale cooperation too. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying by any means that, you know, a contractor couldn't handle it. I'm just saying, how could, there's not a lot of employees, so how can they just feel comfortable picking up a phone and calling someone and not knowing who they're speaking to? That's, that's the piece.
Because it's a small organization, you mean? More personal relationship?
Uh huh. And then how would, on, in emergency, how, how is that going to be handled?
Well, that's all stuff that we would have to iron out with whoever we hired, but I'm sure a consultant, consulting firm would let us know exactly what, when they're available. And I think it would be more available than 20 hours a week.
Right. So, well, now you're focused on the part-time where we're saying we could just take that out because we would have to come back and amend it should we find out it's going to be a full-time. So, I don't know.
No, I don't think anybody's going to do that job for part-time. That would, not a full-time, it's a full-time position.
But you've got to realize it's a new position, right? So it's going to take time to, to gear up that person to get into the full-time. I don't know. But then like Doug mentioned, maybe another, another town, you know, like, I don't know how Barville handles it or.
There's probably a bunch of options you can go.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be somebody else that's just a bunch of consultants, pick up a bunch of consulting work, like, like grant writers and others, they all have multiple clients. So 35 may be perfect, but, you know, I don't know if necessarily it needs to be a firm, but it very well could be somebody. I think we're getting caught up on who's potentially filling it and not the language and that's in the ordinance itself.
So do we want to amend it and take out part-time?
I want a full-time. You want to hire another full-time?
No. Well, yeah, that's another thing. If they take out part-time, now are we, are we on the hook now for?
No, it just says the, the Human Resource Manager. I mean.
Can they come and you say you're part-time?
It'd have to be advertised as such and not to exceed number of hours.
You can leave the part-time, but if you decide to in this budget, fund it for a full-time or you fund it in a future budget as a full-time, you're just going to have to bring the ordinance back. That's all I was saying.
Can I point something out? I think we're close. I think we're all close to agreement. I really do.
With your, with what you want to do.
Maybe put this off for a week or two, because we are close to agreeing on something. And let's put something together that we can all agree on, such as what Doug was talking about, or such as, you know, to expand it a little bit as far as bringing in another, another town. That's a great idea, Doug. But, or even looking into the possibility of a consultant. I don't even know if we even went down that road at all. I could be way off base, but I just think that it could be the way to go. At least, at least it's something that we should look into. Because I don't think we're far off at all.
So wouldn't we need to get the ordinance approved so we can move forward and look into this position?
Yeah, I think you have to approve the actual.
Right.
You have the need and then you have, you have a job description, now you have a title, and then how you execute that.
Well, I think that's where you're going to, I think that's where the council then falls off. Because once you pass the ordinance, it's up to Finance Director and the Administrator to determine who fills the position. It's not a council action. We can only create the position. We can't actually.
And then hand it over.
Hand it off. That's why I was wondering, does it stand alone? Is there legitimacy in it reporting to the council? I don't know how it works in other communities, but, you know, if the council wants to be brought in in that conversation, then I think it would make sense to have some thoughts from the administrator in hopes that, you know, then he would be willing to invite us in on that conversation when it does come time to help fill the position. But that's just, that's just my thoughts. If we want this to really succeed, I think it can't be whose idea is better or entrenching myself in this argument or that argument. It, we really need to be on board and collaborative in this process. Otherwise, it, somebody said up here, it will fail. And that's just going to hurt the town in the long run, so.
But that's the job of the administrator to oversee the staff in town halls.
Well, I think we're, we're close as, as my colleague said here, that maybe we need to postpone and work to see if we can look at how it would be executed and how it would be implemented with another town, you know, get the details a little bit better ironed out, and then come back and have that included in this discussion. Just a thought.
If we do table it, I'm going to rescind my motion to close the public hearing, if that's okay with you.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to, I'll vote that part.
That's what Council, oh, O'Hara voted against closing the public hearing.
All right, so do you want to rescind and we'll do, do we want to, do you want to rescind your motion? Who made the motion?
I did. I'll rescind my motion.
I'll rescind the second.
Okay. And then, so now. Okay, and then, so now you want to rescind your motion to close public hearing?
Correct, yep. I rescind my motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have to do a roll call on all these, or?
I think you should take, you know, there was a motion in second, so rescinding the motion on the main matter
There was.
But the motion to
Close.
public hearing needs to be a motion to reconsider by someone on the positive side.
Didn't we make a second on the first, didn't we make a second on this? That's how we ended up in discussion. We don't need to vote, we didn't vote. Okay, gotcha, I see. Yeah, I'm good. So just the public hearing?
So you made a motion to rescind, right?
Yeah, I made a motion to rescind the public hearing. Oh, sorry, a motion to reconsider the closing of the public hearing.
Oh, so good, that.
So we have a motion in second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Beauregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
So now, Madam President, it's up to the councils. The council is not making any further motions, and it would be, I would recommend that you continue both matters to a date certain, so you know, the mo, the public hearing is a date certain.
Okay.
Even though public hearing did not have to be advertised like a zoning matter, but, yeah.
Okay, so, Joanne, Kim, what's the next meeting? Oh, you're not going to be here. I'm sorry. Can you go the next meeting after that one?
June 3rd.
June 3rd? So make a motion to
To consider, to continue both the public hearing and the second reading on this item, which is item B, 7B, to June 3rd. At least that's what I'm hearing.
Yep.
Yep, I'll make a motion to continue the second reading and public hearing to a date certain of June 3rd.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Beauregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
A new business discussion by councilor, other action on award of bid for statistical reevaluation bid, Ms. St. George.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, so we only received one bid, and that was from Catalyst, former Northeast Revow. So, per my letter, I'm recommending we award the statistical revow to Catalyst in an amount of $98,000.
How does that differ from previous amounts? Like, 98, that more, is that about the same? I can't remember what it was.
So, this is just an update, so it's not a full, yeah. It's a lot less than a full.
Yep.
But it did go up. I believe the last statistical was about 94,000.
And you said that Catalyst is formerly Northeast Revow, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they still go by Northeast, but
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Have we had any issues with them in the past? Are they, are they good to work with?
Um, they're really responsive whenever I have an issue. It's just really hard because there's only really two out there, three. And it's, it's tough to choose when you only get one bid. And I've had positive things with them. They're always there when I call, they're always working on the system for me. But again, there's only a handful of them to choose from.
Who did the last full reevaluation? Wasn't it Northeast?
Yeah.
Haven't they been a mess the last few times? At least, they may be great to work with from your end, but they've been bad.
For the full revaluation?
Right.
The feedback from the residents, it was, there was a lot of negativity from Northeast. But to work with them, they are pretty decent to work with.
And is it typical that towns are only getting one?
Yeah, that's
One bid? It seems, if there's two or three, you think somebody would want to bid for it, right?
No, so we sent it out, we put it on BidNet. And there's Vision, Tyler, Northeast, and Windborne Associates, but they usually do smaller smaller things.
Yeah.
And we only received Northeast back.
And what happens if we vote no on this?
Well
Um, we have to go out to bid again, which, uh, two, so, not, some, a couple of details, so there's, like she had said, there's three. One Catalyst bid, one sent, legitimately sent us a letter and said, no, we're not going to bid. Uh, the third never gave us an answer, so, yeah, we could go out to bid again, but that would just push our timeline back to have to get this done for the town, for the next assessment. So, the council always has the right to be able to deny our award of bid, but there's not much benefit in this case.
Did we already have something budgeted for this?
Every year we have, we set aside funds for updates and revows. We actually sat down with Jen and Jeri Ann, and we, we have an Excel calculation that goes over the projected, what we think that they will be, and we're on par.
So we have
Yeah, we can, we can, yeah, yeah, we have funds for this, yep.
Can I ask Tony a question? I'm going to go way out there now, it could just be a stupid question, but I'm going to ask it anyway.
Maybe.
On years that we have a revow.
The full ones?
The full.
Yeah. Well
This is an update?
Yeah.
The big, you're talking about the big, big ones?
No, this one.
This one, okay.
So this, this will, this will result in, in the increasing people's property, right?
Whatever the, however the, the dice fall.
Right. So, and then years that we do that, and then we do our budget, and then the budget always goes up a little bit, even if it's a little bit sometimes.
Every year, yeah.
So it's like getting double whammy, right?
Well, the budget naturally goes up, the operation budget naturally goes up every year.
Of course, it has to. Everything, everything increases. We all understand that.
But when you lower the, when you increase the base for the assessments, it's a, it's an inverse relationship. It all depends on which way it goes, sometimes.
So what happens if we just passed, what happens if we just passed, what happens if we just passed on this right now, just, we're not going to do it this year?
Oh, yeah, you, you'll get the state coming down, cracking down right on you.
Is it?
This is state required. Every three years we're required to do a statistical, and then of those three years, nine of them, you have to do a full. So three-year, three-year, full. Three-year, three-year, full.
And not necessarily the values will go up. It depends on the market.
However the, the dice fall.
The market's up right now, but
It goes up. It's real estate. It's a safe thing, it's going to go up.
Yeah, so, it all depends.
All right, thank you.
So, Councilman Ogier, to your point, do you feel comfortable knowing
Half of $98,000. I don't think they've been very, I just think it's been a mess the last few statistical revows with Northeast. They may be great, like I said, to work with, but I just, there's a lot of frustration out there, and it wasn't just in North Smithfield, it was the state, and I'm, they handle a few other communities, and I can't speak to how they operate there, but you know, I just seems like a lot of money, and you know, it, people are going to get hit, and I, you know, and I know I've had to work with them, and they've not been the most attentive and quickest to work with when trying to justify things, and you know, I just, I, I think it could be better. I, I think we're stuck, but I think if we can, I think, I don't know, can we negotiate some of the fun? Like, does it have to be the 98,000, like, once it's bid? I'm assuming we have to accept it right as is, but
That's how the bidding works, yeah.
How long, how long does it take for the process?
Uh, usually, I, we like to bid for something as big as this, when they submit a bid packet and everything, I like to go for two to three weeks. And doing something like this, I mean, Jen, when do you, when do you usually start this process? I don't want to
So they usually start it in late spring, for the following year, so
Right.
They would be starting, if this was awarded tonight, they would be starting within the next couple of weeks. If we go out to bid again, it's just going to prolong.
We're starting in like the summer.
Yeah, it's just going to move everything back.
At best case scenario, we have the other, because they get notified, so all three of them get notified when I put this out to BidNet. So it's not like they didn't know about it. So, best case scenario, we have the third vendor put in a bid, and it's going to be relatively close to 98,000 regardless. They're all competitively bidding with each, within each other.
In the future, should we be going out to bid sooner than, so that way it's not, I mean, because now they kind of have us, right? Because we waited till the last minute, so they're like, here's your bid, and you guys have got to get going, so
In a sense, they strong-armed us, yeah, but that was Yes, uh, we should have, we should have went out earlier, yes.
So maybe going forward, we can start this a lot earlier?
Yeah, I've been trying to work on things, doing things a lot earlier.
The, the other question I have, if it's okay, Madam President, is, you know, they do work in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. When we put it out to bid, are we just looking at Rhode Island, or is it a broad range of people who may be licensed and certified to also work in the state?
When I send out the bid, uh, it's nationwide.
Okay, I just wanted to
BidNet's nationwide, yeah.
Nationwide?
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to ask that quite fine question.
Well, I know there was a lot of discontent the last, the last time we had the revow, so there were a lot of people whose properties went up significantly, and others way down, so it didn't seem to be a very, well, well-done process, but I mean, I mean, I would, I, if we can hold off, I mean, you've already if you want to do, you're looking like, no, I don't want to wait.
No, because this is how we get into our problems, then that, you know, her department gets delayed, my department gets delayed, it's, it's a trickle-down process. And like I said, your best case scenario is you have another company, the other, the third, I always forget their names, but the third company bid apply, and they're going to be relatively not far off from this pricing. And it's not like we can negotiate. It's competitive bidding. We put out an RFP, and that's what it is. We have certain statutes we have to abide by.
How long does it take them to finish this?
The, the revow?
So they, all numbers have to be in by December 31st. But once December 31st comes, they do all their data entry, and then they send out letters to everyone notifying of what your bid, your home was, and what it will be. And then they have the right, so they have to send it out usually mid-January, and then they have so many weeks to appeal to Northeast. And then, once they're done with that, I get the final numbers, and then we start with the budget and getting the
At the same time, we're doing the, I'm doing the audit at the same time, among other operational procedures, but
So everything's kind of like on a timeline?
Okay, so if we were to rectify this for next time, when should we be going out to bid?
Preferably like February, but I think, what, we went, we sent it out in March?
Yeah, so
April?
The full revow, um, we went out earlier, I think it was like early February. This was a statistical, and then we were getting ready, like drafting up the RFP, and it went out, I believe, early March.
Yeah.
And then they had so many weeks to apply. Then we had the bid opening on April 3rd. And I think it was three weeks after we posted.
All right, well, I, for lack of, you know, I don't want to hold things up, I'm going to make a motion to approve $98,000 for Catalyst for the 2024 statistical revow. I mean, what can we do?
Yeah, I agree.
Budgeted, approved, committed time, reserve count, correct?
Second with discussion, do you think we could just go to them and let them know what kind of feedback we had from the, from the residents on their last one, and see if maybe we can hold off part of the payment until they're complete, and see how, what kind of feedback we get on how they handled the situation, or?
So you're saying, wait to hear back? I just want to understand what you're suggesting.
See if we can pay maybe in thirds or something, just so that we have something to hold back on if we get so many negative feedbacks like we did. I mean, I know they're the only ones in town, but
We don't pay this all up at, all at once.
You don't?
We pay it, I believe, quarterly.
Yeah.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, it's not in one lump sum.
All right.
And then there's going to be, I mean, is, there's always, people are always going to complain about a revow, it's a statistical that's, that's across the state. I mean, I just got mine.
I understand that people aren't going to be happy with their taxes going up, but if people, if they're trying to call to get some sort of resolution, and they're not getting any, any response from them, or they're not you know, there's no back and forth with the residents, then
Yeah.
you know, if, if we're letting them know that, yeah, you can appeal this, you can call them, and they're not getting any, any return calls or anything back from them, that's, that's obviously a problem.
Yeah, we'd like them to step up their game on customer service, I guess.
Yeah, we'll try and look at the process and see if there's any efficiencies that we can find to, you know, cut any fat throughout, to make them get back to the residents quicker. We'll definitely try and analyze that and see if we can make it better, best to customer experience.
Okay, so we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beauregard?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
No.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
So, John, that's the one you want to table on? No.
No.
Okay. Uh, discussion by councilor, other action on application for tax stabilization related to business expansion RTM Realty slash MTR located at 229 Quaker Lane Highway, assessors plat 001-470, Robert R. Hull, Mr. Beauregard, and Mrs. Zelinski.
Uh, Mr. Hull is here tonight. If he could, um, want to come up to the podium, I'd like to hear about your business. He expanded his, it's next to the town bond. He, how many, how many, how many bays?
Eight.
Eight, eight bays, indoor gun, gun range bays, beautiful, state-of-the-art. But he was, he invested into the town. We gave Planet Fitness, who was a multimillion-dollar national company, we gave them a tax stabilization agreement, and I would ask that we do the same thing for a, a resident who's been in town doing business for a long time. He put an expansion on, on his business, it fits the criteria, so I'd like to see him qualify for this. He is qualified for it. I'd like to see it approved. You want to just tell us about your business?
Sure. Um, we recently opened, probably about 10 weeks ago. Um, it was in the works for about four years, about one year of construction. It's eight lanes, it's totally state-of-the-art, and there's nothing like that around here, nothing like that in northern Rhode Island. My customers have been very happy. I mean, we're bringing people from Massachusetts. People come in, they go to restaurants, they get gas here, I mean, they bring a lot of business to North Smithfield. Our family has businesses, probably since 1984, in town, so we always reinvested in, in the town.
Excuse me, are you the youngest of the Hull boys?
Yes.
Okay.
He's the most handsome, too.
He, he was the baby of the family. They had quite a few very, very well-meaning, very prosperous, absolutely.
Yep, passed away.
And this probably helps you with, you probably were able to not only rent out the bays, but now you can sell ammunition, and it probably
Yeah, we sell the ammunition, we have instructors, I mean, we have five, six instructors.
So your whole business expanded as a result of this?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, yep, no. Um, we brought in people from out of town. We got, like I say, five, six instructors, we have lady instructor, we have five men instructors, a lot of safety classes for firearms. Yeah. I mean, you can all come out and see the place, you know.
I saw it, it was almost finished. It was great.
So just looking for some help from the town, you know.
Mrs. Zelinski, I don't know if you wanted to add to this?
I, I think you pretty, did a good job of introduction, Councilman Beauregard. Mr. Hull had a very salient point there about ripple-out businesses to sandwiches and gasoline supermarkets, but the other thing that, I, I think Mr. Hull started to hit on it, he was talking about the instructors. Gun safety is paramount, if anybody has a weapon in their home or is contemplating purchasing a weapon, which is your Second Amendment right. The other piece of this is, Mr. Hull, how many employees do, do you, do you feel that, how many do you have right now, and do you have
We have 12 to 14 employees.
Right now?
Right.
Okay, and business is growing?
Yeah, oh, yeah. We get a lot of part-timers, um, we get some old-timers that work there during the day, they love their job. Yeah, oh yeah, we get a lot of part-timers, um, we get some old-timers that work there during the day, they love their job.
Thank you, thank you for keeping your business in North Smithfield.
Not a public speaker, so, sorry about that, but... Any other questions, though?
If this business runs like the family business did, you're gonna be here a long time.
So, uh, the, this solicitor just reminded me that this has to be scheduled for a public hearing. So, uh, hopefully Council can schedule this.
Yep.
It actually hasn't advertised in newspaper or general circulation. And the Council has specific statutory findings in your ordinance and state law that you have to make.
So, I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask you, uh, so have, have you added employees as a result of this expansion?
Yes, I've had.
You have?
I'll be about ten, ten employees.
Okay, that's great.
Yep, I had a machine shop there, and we went from a machine shop to a gun store, and then a gun store to an indoor, state-of-the-art indoor gun range.
Good, thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
You still load ammunition there, too?
Yeah.
Does someone want to go over this, um, this chart, or...
Yeah, is that why you're here, young lady? So would you like to present what's, what's in our packet so people can, and then we'll have to, uh, do, will we do that now, solicitor? Or would we wait until we have the, I would think, right?
I would think all this information should be presented at the public hearing, so that anybody can comment on it.
Right.
All right.
Obviously, the application and all the documentation and the, the options should be posted on the website. You're not gonna advertise all that documents, but you are gonna advertise in here.
Okay, okay.
I just was checking with the clerk to determine what date she could give you a public hearing with the ten-day notice requirement.
Right.
I could probably get the advertisement in for, um, the sixteenth. It's a lot cheaper to go through the Valley Breeze than it is the call, so we usually do Thursday. I missed the deadline for this Thursday, so I would, I could advertise next week with the help of the assessor, and... It would be on the third. We could do it on the third.
Is the third gonna be the budget, uh, meeting, or no? Huh?
Which one?
Is it, is it gonna be mostly June is, is budget meeting, so is, do you know?
So, uh, current, so we have the Budget Committee presentation tonight, then we have the public hearing next meeting. And then, um, you normally, from what I've heard, the Council deciding what the budget's gonna be, the adoption, is held at a separate meeting, so I was thinking the tenth.
The tenth?
An abnormal meeting, it's a Monday, but it's in between the other two. I was gonna, I wanted to have it sooner, but because Memorial Day, we can't. So June tenth would be, was when I was gonna have it scheduled.
Hey, I just have a quick question. Did we have a public hearing for Beef Barn? We did?
I don't know.
I don't remember.
I don't recall.
Well, that is in the ordinance, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm assuming there's a record of it.
Yeah, I don't remember.
No idea, I wasn't on the council.
The Council is all, uh, that's the top part, to do research on Planet Fitness as well as Beef Barn, see if there was a public hearing. And at this point, if the public hearing was omitted, it's immat大气 at this point.
Meaning, we will still go ahead with the public hearing?
For this, for course, yes, but if should we find that there was no public meeting, well, you can't go back and send that type of, uh, uh, tax evasion.
There was.
Stabilization, didn't it?
All right, I, do you have anything else on the agenda, Jen?
No, so I can't, you don't want me to explain it tonight?
No, we'll have to, I'm sorry, you'll have to come back.
It's fine.
Thank you.
Come back in June. Thank you.
All right, so, um...
Are we scheduling it to a certain date, the, the...
We can do the third as long as that agenda's open. Is that all right with everyone?
Yeah, it works.
John, you agree with the third?
June third is our regular meeting, no?
Do you have to make a motion for that, then?
David, do we have to make a motion for that, or is that...
I, I would, because it's on your agenda, but you would not necessarily need to do it, but I, just out of clarity, for purpose of clarity, make a motion to schedule the public hearing with the appropriate notice for June third.
So I'm like...
That means there'll be at least ten days' notice in the paper prior to the hearing.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biurgad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Discussion by Council voter, other action on permission for Rhode Island Energy to install a new pole on Harkness Road, Mr. Pendergast.
Good evening. You should have in front of you, um, some paperwork from Rhode Island Energy to install a new pole on Harkness. I just need you to approve, uh, this project to file it with the clerk's office.
And this is just a formality, we, we've done this before, right?
Yeah, it's just that the, the paperwork has to be filed with the clerk's office.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Does it have to have, uh, approval for the administrator to sign or anything? No?
No, I think it's, um, all for the clerk's office.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biurgad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes. Discussion by Council voter, other action on underground utility replacement at Westview Estates to be completed by Rhode Island Energy, Mr. Pendergast.
Very similar situation here, a project that we've already approved for Tanglewood Winchester and Motha Roads. Underground, uh, they were updating the underground cable. Once again, I need your permission so we can file this in the clerk's office.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biurgad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Ogier?
Yes.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, discussion by Council voter, other action on Budget Committee's FY twenty-five budget recommendations. Mr. Sevigney and Mr. De La Cruz.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm, uh, Dave De La Cruz, Secretary, filling in for Joey, who's dealing with an allergy issue with his voice. He'll be happy to take some questions afterwards. So the Budget Committee has completed the preparation of the town's fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget recommendations. The proposed, oh, thank you. There we go. The proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget increases are conservative, an attempt to balance the needs of res, of the residents of the town of North Smithfield with the necessary expenditures to keep the town's operations running in an efficient and effective manner. The Budget Committee is aware of the continued inflationary pressures on homeowners, and made every effort to minimize the economic impact on taxpayers. The Committee also considered the long-term impacts of funding certain projects and departments. The proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget reflects a one-point-seven million, or three-point-three-eight percent increase of the twenty-twenty-four fiscal year budget. So some of the proposed increases include the Police Department at about a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars for education and contract increases, Fire Department at about three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand for contract increases, and two additional firefighters, DPW at about seventy-six thousand for, uh, a maintenance and janitorial position, Highway at about five-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand for road repair, professional services, and rubbish, School Department at about eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand to cover, um, a loss in projected state aid, and also some ride reimbursable projects. And then there are other, uh, changes as well, at about two-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars. So the proposed levy increase calculates to two-point-five-one percent. Further explanation for the line item increases is, is explained in detail below. So first, there are several personnel costs. We have the Fire Department. Consistent with last year, the Fire Department has requested two additional personnel in order to support additional rescues. This was proposed by the Fire Department in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four as part of a long-term plan to fully staff the Fire Department. We agree that the hiring of two additional personnel would alleviate some of the coverage challenges the Fire Department regularly faces. Two firefighters were approved in twenty-twenty-four, and the department is requesting an additional two firefighters for twenty-twenty-five. The two firefighters that were included in twenty-twenty-four's budget have been hired as of January twenty-twenty-four, and these two positions will result in a full-year increase in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five's budget of two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. In addition, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget includes two additional new positions. Although the department requested a full-year's funding for these positions of two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, the Committee believes that by the time the department identifies and hires the two personnel, they most likely will not start until halfway through the year. This timing is, is consistent with the timing of hiring in twenty-twenty-four. Therefore, we are recommending a budget increase of a hundred-and-eight thousand for these two new firefighter positions for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, which is half the department request. Overall, the increase to the Fire Department budget for these personnel additions is three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand. DPW, a maintenance janitorial personnel line item was added to the amount of forty-six thousand eight-hundred-and-two dollars, with added benefit cost to DPW personnel overall, adding another approximate thirty thousand dollars. This consists of a shift out of the Highway Department for a maintenance worker of twenty-seven thousand, combined with the cost of a custodian for three town buildings into one full-time position. And then in finance, the addition of a part-time finance floating position, uh, you can see an explanation for this under other items. Regarding the School Department, the School Department presented an operating budget request with a two-point-three-six percent increase based on an initial estimated amount of state funding of about seven-point-nine million. However, the latest estimate of aid provided by the state is seven-point-eight million, a shortfall of about a hundred-and-six thousand in state aid. At this level of state funding, the Budget Committee feels that it is appropriate to increase the level of funding for the, from the town to cover the shortfall, since the School Department has clearly articulated the needs for this funding in their own budget. In addition, the Budget Committee recommends an increase in the School Department budget of point-five percent in order to address increases in salaries and transportation costs. The total recommended increase to the School Department budget is one-point-one percent, or eight-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand one-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Please note that in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, the Budget Committee recommended that any surplus funds received by the School Department be set aside for future capital projects. Based on additional information received from the School Department during fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget deliberations, the department has demonstrated that budget surpluses resulting from state aid or from efficient operations are set aside and reserved, or used in the current budget year for these projects as appropriate. Furthermore, the School Department has significant capital improvement needs in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and beyond, and it is anticipated that funds will continue to, need to be reserved to ensure that these capital needs can be addressed in the future. Other items? In fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, uh, in the budget, the Committee recommended an increase of thirty-five thousand per year to hire an HR Personnel Director, which was approved by the Town Council. As of May twenty-twenty-four, a director has not been hired, we now question whether or not that expenditure is necessary, and we've talked about this already. We believe that the thirty-five thousand amount would be better allocated to budgeting software as requested by the Finance Department, and we recommend an additional, about twenty-four thousand to be spent on fi, a finance floating or part-time position to aid the department and perform tasks in Town Hall, such as covering lunches in the town collection, excuse me, in the tax collections office, which is currently being done by the Finance Director, as the only personnel cross-trained to cover duties of that office. Regarding the budget software request, currently, the budget is completed through a series of Excel spreadsheets, which do not incorporate the proper internal controls and automatic updating that would enable the budget process to flow more efficiently and effectively. As noted in the Auditor's Report from fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, the Auditor has identified two significant deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting that needs to be addressed by the town. The first of these concerns, the, the timely completion of end-of-month tasks, including reconciliations. The second involves deficiencies in rec, excuse me, in record-keeping related to capital assets and personnel in the Finance Office. While significant deficiencies identify areas of concern and do not rise to the level of material weakness, which are much more serious, such deficiencies could rise to the level of material weakness if left unaddressed. Both of these deficiencies are indicative of a lack of resources in the Finance Department. By increasing the level of staffing in that department, as well as investing in a better budgeting software, the town, the town can ensure that such deficiencies and controls are remediated before they become material weaknesses. The Committee recommends two changes to the classification of budgeting line items in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four's budget going forward. The first of these is the reclassification of the amount paid for senior services from the Parks and Recreation budget to the Town Council budget as a contribution line item. Senior services are provided through a third-party provider, Aging Well, that does not report to the Director of Parks and Recreation, or DPW. The other budgeted line item we addressed is the Pumpkin Fest, which we believe should operate as its own five-oh-one-C-three organization, rather than be included as part of the operating budget for the town under Town Council contributions, and included in the Police budget. The Pumpkin Fest could operate as its own entity with its own funds and resources, rather than co-mingling its funds with those of the town. Finally, the Committee does not agree with the Town Administrator's recommendation that the employee contributions to health insurance be increased from sixteen to seventeen percent. We recommend that the contribution remain at sixteen percent. By increasing the required contribution, the recommended increases to salaries, employee raises, would be undercut by the amount of the benefits contribution increases, and the resulting savings to the town does not justify the reduction in employees' take-home pay. Perhaps the benefit contributions could be negotiated as part of the next union contract, and future raises could be adjusted accordingly as part of the negotiations. Thank you. Any questions?
I have, I have one, Madam President. One of the questions I had, and I have more, but I'll, I'll keep it to one for now, is some of the salary increases. You know, when I was looking at it, um, the Finance Director was five percent, the Planner was three and a quarter, and others seemed to be at around three and a quarter or three percent. There, there didn't really seem to be any level of consistency on top of that, and so I wanted to know what went into that, and what justified that increase, because I used the Planner and the Finance Director only because, um, they both seem to do a lot of work. So in my mind, if you were giving five percent to one, it would make sense to explore the five percent for the other, considering the Planner position was lowered when Tom Kravitz left. And this Planner seems to be doing a lot more with grants and other areas outside of his scope. And the other question I have is, um, the stipend increases as well, there seems to be around three and a quarter percent as well, and that could be future savings that could be applied towards budgeting software, et cetera. So that's, those are my two main questions, I guess, for right now.
So the salary, the salary line items, the increases, were based on their years being here. So if you were here for last year, you got three and a quarter percent. Tony, for instance, came in, in February, he didn't get an increase last year. So he got the three and a quarter, plus we gave him a little more for the period of time that he was here last year where he got nothing. That was the reason for the increases, the way we did those.
So wouldn't it be more? In that logic, wouldn't it be closer to seven?
Tony should have been...
I'm just, I'm just, I, I, I'm just more curious as the process that went into the analysis, that's what I'm really, it doesn't matter who's getting it. Could be two other positions I picked, those are just the two that stood out.
It was based on that, when they were hired. So the people that started within the last fiscal year weren't entitled to those raises last year. When Tony sat with us at the Budget Meeting, Budget Committee hearings last year, he had just started. He didn't get a raise last year.
Right, that makes sense.
So this year, we gave the three and a quarter, plus a little bit more, because of the period of time, those nine months that he was here, where...
Okay, I'm fo, I'm following that, I guess my other question is, related to that, is, was there any, um, salary market surveys done to determine if the Finance Director is currently being underpaid by five percent?
We did get those from both, from several departments, we did see those from several departments, yes.
So I think...
And everybody is underpaid.
Well, I think everybody can make an argument in and out of government that they could be underpaid, but...
So if you look at area towns, I mean, there, there were several departments that did give us those numbers. We did take some of that into consideration, but basically, if you look at the people that work here... that work here, everybody is underpaid.
I don't think anyone's disagreeing that, you know, that people should, could be paid more, inflationary times especially. I think the question is, is the, if Tony, if the finance director, I'm not going to use names, if the finance director got 5%, he's been here for two years, or she's been here for two years, and somebody else has been here for four years, but maybe they only gained 2%. At what point do you bring them up? That's, that's what I'm wondering. The planner's been here for a few years now, so he's gaining 3.25%. Does that mean that it's 3.25% and that caps, that's like the high end of the allotment you can get?
Well, we tried to keep everybody in line with what was contractual.
The planner's not contractual.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But the contractual was 3.25% for this year. We tried to keep everybody the same across the board. So, I mean, I'm not quite sure what you're looking for. I mean...
So you're just saying, all right, so you said a couple of different things. You said first, he was, they were underpaid, and you looked at finance directors or any position that was non-union. I'm only talking non-union, because I know the union is negotiated. So in that's the case, everybody should get 3.25% or 3% that's non-union, and that's not necessarily the case. So I just want to know, how did that...
Just regarding the finance director in particular, we did have a discussion with him. We had an analysis of that, and that the finance, we looked at other towns, and the finance director here is paid less than in other towns. And we talked to Tony about what was more important, more pay or more help, because it seems that this office is under resource.
Mm-hmm, I agree with that.
And he agreed that the, it's more important to him to have this floater position, this other position. I mean, we could throw tons of money at him, but there's only so many hours in a day, and there's only, he's one person, right? So, so that's kind of what our analysis was based on, was it, you know, are we going to just bring him up to market, which would be quite a big increase over, over what he's currently paid? Or would we consider trying to figure out a way to help the department have more resources to get the work done that they actually need to get done? So that's kind of the, where we landed, is a 5% increase and then a floater position for the department.
Okay, thank you.
Did that seem to help?
Yeah, I get where the logic, I was just curious as to what went into the thought, because at first value, there was no real explanation there, so I do appreciate the explanation. I don't know if I necessarily, I understand where you went, I just don't know, but we're great at this every now and then.
I have a quick question about the floating or part-time position to aid the department in, again, finance, such as covering lunches in the tax collection office. Aren't there two people in there? Can't they take lunch at different times?
Tony?
Yeah, well, one's, well, one's out. They can't, you know, I go down the cover so that they can go take a lunch.
You mean if there's only one person in there? Does that happen frequently?
As frequent as, you know, with medical leave, with vacations, last minute, you know, I need time off, or even trainings, stuff like that, yeah, it happens pretty often. They have quarterly collection training, stuff like that. Yeah, I'm down there a little bit.
The other thing was the $106,000 for the state aid shortfall for the school. That's not a final number, is it?
Yeah.
The numbers provided with state aid from, for the school is final, so just to explain it, they, as they were going through their process, and near the very end, we found out, the state told us, well, the state told the school, this is how much you're getting. It ended up being less than what the state had projected, so budget committee thought it was wise to cover that gap.
Okay, and those are firm numbers, they're not going to change?
That is, not the state, not state aid for everything else, but state aid for education is, that is concrete, unless some weird thing happens, but...
So we, I'm just going to jump in, Paula, real quick. So even, because I believe it has changed in years past, and they haven't set their budget yet at the state level.
Education's done. The aid for like meals and beverage and, and everything else, that's not...
So I'm just gonna, I just want to ask a question just for clarification, my own understanding. So if we pass the budget June 10th, and then the state finalizes its budget two weeks later, and there is a change to state education, then what? Do we revisit?
Yeah, you revisit the, I mean, if it's a, if it's a surplus, then you can keep the budget the way it is.
Right, yeah, no, but if it's less...
If it's less, I mean, I don't know of a ti, I mean, I haven't been around for forever, but I don't know of a time that they've set the budget and say, this is what it is, and then they went back and said, no, 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 we're going to redo it again, and this is different. I can't speak to that, of whether that's happened. It doesn't sound like it ever has, speaking to other finance directors and within the position I had prior to this.
Question?
Joey?
Yes.
The increase in the fire department?
Yes.
We agreed to that because they were going to put another rescue on the road.
Correct.
Not because they were just going to fill manpower?
Correct.
Is that happening?
That rescue is now being manned Monday through Friday. I believe eight hours a day. This is going to get them to the next step.
Okay.
So he is working at getting to that next step.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
So this budgeting software and finance, do we have any quotes on this 35,000?
I can, well, I can't get quotes because you would have to go out to bid, and that would go against purchasing laws. But I have talked to, I've, I've already talked to three different, I've had consultations with them, no pricing. They've given me roundabouts, not quotes, of how much it would be, and middle ground was 35K. There's a startup fee of like 12,000, and then yearly it was like 22, 23. Yeah. It was, weirdly enough, it was the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But I can provide emails and stuff that they had sent me to show you what, how much it had cost, how much they had sent me, so. We were in shock at how much it cost when they had, we thought it was going to be way less.
When you only do, you don't do any forecasting, you just do one budget a year, so does that really...
So we can't, well, we do have to do forecasting when it comes to scenario building for negotiations for contracts. So that's something that a lot of, all of them provide. We were mainly looking at, and that, that pricing is only for operation and personnel budgeting. It doesn't include capital, it doesn't include a budget book. It isn't, there's one more thing it doesn't include. So we were trying to stick to just the bare bones of what we need, and there's just those two. We can take care of capital ourselves, it's not a huge haul. Personnel and operating is, those are the two big ones. That's what takes up a lot of our time, and that's where a lot of margin for error can happen, so, yeah.
Well, may I, one more quick question? So the capital needs of the school department?
Yes.
We're saying that, you know, that 25 and beyond anticipated funds will continue to need to be reserved to ensure these capital needs can be addressed. So are those, are we making provisions for that, so we don't have, you know, a huge bill come up all of a sudden where, I just don't, I don't know what...
There are provisions being made, and the school's been doing a good job with their surplus, and also taking care of that.
Okay, so they've got the capital under control right now, as far as you can see?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So, in tax assessor, health insurance, like double, is that what you're talking about, moving the percentage down to bring some of these, these numbers back in line, or...
So when something like that happens, it's, when, when you see healthcare and any of the lines go up, it's because someone went from single to family. It's a significant difference in cost. So if you see any of those throughout the budget, that they, every time we had a department, they were questioning it, and every time it was because of going from single to family, because right now that position is vacant, and we have to assume that the person coming in would take family as a worst-case scenario.
Thank you, from me, anyway.
Well, I'd also like to thank the committee. I mean, we put a lot of time into doing this, a lot of nights, and I'd also like to thank Anthony and Jeriann, because they do an awful lot for us behind the scenes that nobody else sees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the town and North Smithfield Budget Committee's fiscal year 24, 25 presentation to the Town Council dated May 6th.
Second?
You have a motion, a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Howes? Yes. Discussion by Councilmate, other action on appointments to Town Board/Commissions, Asset Management Commission appointed by the Town Council. One appointment to complete a term from 12/1/2021 through 11/30/2026.
We have in front of us an application, Mr. David DeCristo of Mattity Road. He's a, he owns portfolio properties. He's a self-employed real estate investor and salesperson, and he's expressed an interest in getting on the asset management. I'd like to make a motion to approve his application.
That's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. Public Art Advisory Committee, resignation from Christian D. Resendez. Joey, do we send him the normal letter to thank him? Thank you. Discussion by Councilmate, other action on amendment to section 6-4, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to, we're going to table this one to the next meeting?
Well, just table it until I get some more information, that I want to hand out, so.
Okay, so you'll let us know when?
Yes, please.
Discussion by Councilmate, other action on budget transfers, Mr. Sanaj, fire and rescue, building and zoning, and general government.
Sorry, give me one second, I thought I had more time. There we go. Yeah, so to, in an initiative to try to, so in previous years, we usually let small negatives happen on the budget at the end of the year, if they're not material, if they're not major. To try and not let that happen going forward, I'm trying to cover some of the potential negatives and current negatives of the budget. So as you can see, with fire, the fire chief had said he needed a lot more repairs than he anticipated, so he had some extra funds from fuel, so he's transferring from fuel to vehicle repair. If you wanted to find out more about what those repairs are, you can, I'm sure you can reach out to him. The next one is building and zoning, small variance, but I just wanted, again, just wanted to cover it if I could. They ended up using, basically comes down to they used the copier more than they anticipated. We have a new zoning official, so he does things a little bit differently. He didn't set the budget, so he came into whatever that figure was for the year, and like I said, they ended up using more than they anticipated, so we just want to cover that. And then lastly, general government. So we have one transfer going to cover the janitorial needs. So when we had let go of the, the company we had, they took a lot of their supplies, they took all of their supplies, rather, because it's theirs. So with the startup of the new position, we needed to replace those supplies. That's not something we expected, so we're taking it from those professional services into supplies. And then the other one is to cover other unexpected issues that we had. So we had some issues in the basement, I think it was like a water, something like refrigerator. I don't remember exactly what the mechanical details are, but I would ask if the council could change the $3,000 figure to 5,000, because as actually part of the payment of bills, there was, there was, there was about $2,000 of expenses that is going to hit this line on top of what I had already anticipated, so I just want to increase that a little bit to cover it if we can.
So the total would be seven?
Total would be seven, yep, change it from three to five. And then there's other transfers I want to talk to the council about after. This is all, but...
Okay, do you want to take them individually, maybe? So we, I'll make a motion to approve a transfer of $4,000 for vehicle fuel to vehicle repair and maintenance?
I'll second.
For NS Fire Department, sorry, yeah.
So you have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer $270 to cover copy machine costs for a full year, and for maintenance agreements for the building and zoning department.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second? Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes.
And the final would be for transfer for professional services to cover in-house janitorial needs, to supplies to cover in-house janitorial needs, and also $5,000 for professional services into building, repair, and maintenance. And this is also 5,000, and that's general government.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragad?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Howes?
Yes. Discussion by Councilmate, other action on award a bid for audit of town-school financial statements, Mr. Sanaj?
So our contract with Bacon &amp; Company ran out, so we have, we had to go out to bid for a new, new audit firm. We only got two bidders. Again, this is a nationwide, we send it out nationwide. Yeah, I don't know. We got Markham, which is pretty well-known, well, other communities know about them, whether that be good or bad, I've heard bad. But Bacon &amp; Company, obviously, we know them, we use them, Cheryl and Pat were just here. As you can see, there's a significant price difference in what they both bid. Surprisingly enough, Markham said that they could do it in less hours, but their fees were astronomically higher than Bacon, so. Any questions?
So we just have the request for approval of the selection. We don't have any backup information as to what they're providing us for, 147,000?
I could, I could provide it, it's, it's a book, it's up to the council, but it's legitimately a book.
So the Bacon &amp; Company would be year one, 48,750, year two, 49,300, and year three, 49,750, for a total of 147,800. And they'll be providing professional services for auditing for just the school department?
No, it's for, no, it's for the general fund, school, water, sewer. That's the total for everything. And this is all approved through the auditor general. We have a whole process that we have to go through, so, you know, if we get a second set of eyes on everything, I had to, they, you know, they get every, they get all the details of what's processed, so.
I have a question. How many years have we used Bacon?
That was my question.
Because I'm only asking just by some context. I know in like, you know, the private sector, usually you only keep an account, a firm for a few years, and then you switch it?
Right.
And I'm not sure how long, but I know they've been here.
They've been here for a while. I think it's a little, I think it's more than six years for sure.
Oh, yeah.
But, again, we've, we've heard, that was actually a concern that me and Jeriann and I were talking about, and we had talked to other finance directors, and the auditor general approves if they, if we have, not only does Bacon know our books, but they also came in a lot lower than what somebody like Markham came in at, so they have no, they approve it.
But I think that's part of the argument for if we do switch it up, right?
Right.
And that's the argument why it's, you know, most places probably do, is that they know your books, right? So you get a fresh set of eyes. Isn't that why I was curious if there was any statute, or if it's just, it's probably an in-town thing, but, you know, if we've been using them for a while, it may not hurt to look at, you know, somebody else, but it's probably a larger conversation.
I would say they've been here, I want to say 15... I would say they've been here, I want to say fifty, maybe sixteen years.
They've had, they had two contracts, and then they had an option to extend. Because I looked, I had to go in back and look at what was done previously with the auditor general, because I had to pull those documents. And I, I don't think it's any more than nine years currently.
That's long.
Yeah.
Usually financial like statute, it's like seven years, so I think nine would.
Well, that's what they're at, I mean, that's, like I said, that's what they're at maximum right now, but again, if it's up to the council, it's, there's a big cost variance here and the auditor general says it's okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, but they don't know that we have
They do, because they have.
You know, I mean, they're looking at that, them from a standpoint of their efficiency and, you know, their reputation. And they do have a good reputation, but we're saying that, you know, given so many things that have happened this last year, what we're thinking is having another, another firm look at, give a different opinion, you know, maybe it'll be the same in final analysis, but is it possible to go out and rebid this?
We could. There's, again, I just want to stress the time that it takes, because we have to, I have to send this out for a while. It takes a while for it to go out. And we might not even get these guys to bid again, because if, you know, this is all advertised now, they all get to see how much they bid for. We go out to bid again, they can change their numbers.
So is this a situation where we bid too late?
No, 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 we didn't. We didn't bid too late at all.
Just seems like we're not getting a lot of bids across a lot of what we do.
Compared to the previous years, I think it was like a two-week difference from the prior years. Judging from when the documents were made and submitted to the AOG's office, I think it's like a two, maybe three-week difference of when I had done it.
Cut this open forum at the end. So when did this actually go out for bid? Do you know?
I can pull up BidNet right now. Give me a second. Give me a second. Financial audit created three twenty-six, closing date four twenty-three. And, you know, I have to go through a whole process with it. Before that even gets put out, I have to send it to the AOG's office. I have to, I'm in a queue, so I was waiting for a while from their office to get that back. I had to go back and check in, and she had said, oh, you're not, you're not up yet, essentially. So I had sent that in. I'm sure I could get the date on that, too, of when I had sent it. But I had sent that a while ago, because I didn't want, I knew how long it might, that might take.
I would still feel better if we got, if we could go out and
Yeah.
and there was a further delay and a, you know.
I think I'd sent it late January or early February, because I'm seeing, I had checked back in with them in early March, and they had said that we're not, we're still not ready for you yet, so I had sent this pretty early.
It just seems so weird that we're not getting, what is wrong with us?
I mean, if you throw something like
Why are we not getting any bids?
Yeah, if, I mean, I could open it up to other, in my future bids, I could open it up to other websites. But I had reached out to the Rhode Island's, like, they have like a purchasing league, essentially, and I had reached out, and I said, what is, what do all you guys use? Since I'm the purchasing agent, I need to know these things. What do you guys use to advertise? And everyone said the most common is BidNet. And they start responding, get like twenty emails. But BidNet is the most common, and it's free. And I don't have to pay for a newspaper.
Maybe something like this, who might want to pay for a newspaper? I mean, it's pretty important.
How many, how many people are you gonna get in the newspaper, though? I mean, if you're, if you're an auditing company, you're gonna have access to BidNet, and you're gonna have a profile on there, and you're gonna want to apply through there. I mean, in my opinion, newspaper is a little bit of an antiquated method to advertise for bidding. We get, I mean, just look at the vehicles.
Newspaper is online, I mean.
I'm sorry?
It's not necessarily, certainly holding a newspaper, but it's online, but the point is, this is a pretty important thing, and to have the same auditor for over ten years is just especially when there was some, some concerns in it.
Well, they're the ones who caught the concerns. It's not, you know, it's not them, it's not their fault that the concerns are there. They're the ones that actually caught it.
Right, but she's even expressed that the time's too much.
I'm sorry?
You just said she even said that the time is a little bit, like, you know, you guys had a discussion about the length of time, and it's not
Me and Jeri Ann were, we were questioning the fact of whether we're even allowed to use them, and that AOG's office didn't, they're not saying we can't. We were just questioning it, because we, we asked the same thing you guys are asking.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's talking like bad about Bacon or AOG or anything like that. I think it's just, you know, from a practical standpoint, do we want to use the same company for ten years, or do we want to refresh it after so many years? I, you know, I think, looking at it for ten years, that is a long time to have somebody look at, at the books, and i- if we're using BidNet, that's great. But there may be other bidding services, like you just said, Tony, that maybe some accounting firms are using, and maybe they check more frequently than BidNet. I don't, I don't know how that world works, but.
If something, if we were to transition, just to play, play this out, if, if the town was to transition from the current auditing firm to another one, I could significantly stress to you how much we, the finance department would need that extra position that the budget department just presented, the budget committee. Because that's a huge overhaul to switch from what we have, learn these guys' methods, and provide the same things. So you're not only looking at the increase in cost between, I'm not, whatever, even if we go out to bid, whether it be Markham or not, you're looking at an increase there in cost for whatever that other bid, audit company is, and the increase of costs of, we will need an extra person.
But you're asking for the extra, that's a budget conversation, but you're asking for the extra person.
I'm telling you, we would a hundred percent need.
I don't disagree that it's, it's a lift, but they're not necessarily tied to each other, but I get the argument you're making. I mean, it may be interesting to see what, what services they do offer. I know every CPA, every firm offers different services.
Markham, again, I can provide the, I can table this the next meeting, and I can send the council the, the bid documents. I mean, I can, I have, I have an extra copy upstairs that I can provide to the council, and you guys can look at it yourselves and compare. That's what we have to do with, through the AOG's office. We have to go through a whole grading process for each one, and then it's not just me and Jeri Ann, it's also me and the, the finance director, the CFO, and her assistant there, deputy, I should say, going through and grading it. So it's, it's a culmination of like four heads, and then, again, we get it, we get our, what we're doing checked by their office. So if you want to, we can table it for next meeting if the council desires, and then I can, in the meantime, I can provide the council with those bids, the tabulation and the documents.
So in Markham's proposal, are they offering a lot more than, than what?
Offering the same thing, just way more expensive fees.
All right, yeah, maybe if you can get back to us.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
And what else? Does anyone agree?
Yeah, no, I think, I'd like to see a little bit of backup information. It's a lot, a lot of money to authorize without having, you know, just something to look at and determine, you know. Apples to apples.
Open forum, agenda items only pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six dash sixty, maximum three minutes per person. One second, Mike. Tammy, can you? Is that it? Thank you. Mike, just state your name again, please.
Mike Clifford, four eighty-nine Blacklane Road. No, I wanted to speak about the audit report and the audit services and the bid services. It, it just, you know, we had this discussion when I was on the, when I chaired the budget committee years ago, and there is, there's no statute saying you can't keep an auditor for so many more years than this X number. But the auditor general does have a recommendation, or it was a recommendation of the auditor general's, that you change every three years. We're way overdue for a change. And I, a question, when you look at this, I mean, with the prices that are up there, how is, how is Bacon, how is the third, the company that we currently have now able to maintain the price for three years out at the same thing with no increase? I mean, that should tell you something. It's got a minimal increase. They, they should have a significant increase, and we're not getting, we, we, you know, they were, they were picked up on a number of things in there that really, I, I don't, I'm surprised they didn't go a little further in, in delving into some of these things. So I think a new set of eyes would be great, and I think it's way over di, way over time. So no state law, but there is a recommendation from the auditor general, you change every three years. Common sense. As far as the human resources position, I just wanted to add, nobody was discussing training, and that's, that's a component of this job that they could do, because if they learned, you know, what is discrimination, then we won't get sued for discrimination if they can understand what they shouldn't or shouldn't do, or should or shouldn't say. I mean, the, every union in the world has a workshop on that, like, you know, when I was a teacher, a classroom teacher, we used to have those types of workshops. People who come in and do discrimination and define it and tell you what you could or couldn't say, or how you had to treat a student equally as the other. So I mean, I'm sure there's services and training that would be helpful for the staff, including OMA and APRA laws. Because I, I can't, I'm dumbfounded. When Paulette was the administrator, we used to have in-service training for APRA laws and OMA laws in town, and everybody used to just go down to scouters, and you had to sign up, and you had to, everybody knew the law inside and out. I don't know when that was last done, but I, I, every, it's like you're starting from scratch with everybody, because most of these people don't know the APRA law and the OMA law, and they should know it if they're working in a municipality. So that's the second thing. And they also think that, that human resources person could be, like, you know, it's not just employees that have difficulties. It's residents who have difficulties with, with town services and with town staff. So it's, it, that, that human resources person could also, if I have a problem with, you know, this guy doesn't ever answer my phone calls or doesn't refuse to answer my emails, I can at least go to someone and say, hey, you know, I'm gonna file a discrimination suit against you. So can you handle this and tell them they have to answer your email, and they have to take your phone call? So that's something else that they could do.
Mike, you all set? Are you all set?
Yeah, and in tax stabilization, I just wanted to say one quick thing. It's, it's, it's so ironic that we always say, oh, we need businesses in town, we need businesses in town, we need the revenue, we need the revenue. And the very first thing we do is give them a tax break. So either we take businesses for the money or don't bother, just let us be a bedroom community, because it's not worth the aggravation.
Anyone else want to speak on open forum for agenda items only? Anyone else? No? The last one is executive session, closed discussion by council vote or other action pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A five. Any discussions or considerations related to the acquisition or lease of real property for public purposes or of the disposition of publicly held property wherein advanced public information would be detrimental to the interests of the public? One, potential acquisition of land, and two, potential acquisition of land. B, discussion by council vote or other action pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five A two. Sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, or work sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation, or potential litigation. One, potential litigation.
I'll make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
A second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biragod.
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Howes.
Yes.
We're good? I'll make a motion to... Is it on?
Yes.
I don't think the mic's on.
Oh, I don't think the mic's on, too.
How many votes did we take? Joy, how many votes did you take?
Okay, go ahead.
I think so.
I'll sit.
I'll make a motion to reconvene back into open session, let the record reflect that... Just waiting on the number. Five. Six votes were taken. And two... So eight votes were taken and two were to seal the minutes. No, two were to... Two were to extend the meeting and to seal the minutes.
Second?
Justice was clear, a total of eight votes were taken, two of them were to extend the meeting...
Correct. To seal the minutes.
Right.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Second?
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor... Sorry, roll call, please.
Mr. Buregard. Ms. Hamilton. Ms. Sohara. Ms. Dorgier.
I'll make a motion to...
Motion to adjourn. Second.